And we're live.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I will call the meeting to order on October 28th for our October business meeting. Let's see the school district board of directors in school district. Nice to see everybody. We'll start with the flag salute.
All right.
All right, everybody. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America. To the republic of one nation under God, indivisible,
Great, thank you very much. We have four board members with us tonight. Jamie Morford is not with us. He's got an excused absence and rooting on our soccer team, so. So we're happy that he's there with that and said that he's not here, but we'll catch him up after the meeting. Cabinet members are all here and a couple of other guests, so we'll get started here and let's start off with a great district highlight. Shane, turn it over to you.
Yeah. We are, I mean, you know, we're in the midst of National Principals Month. And, you know, we thought about, I considered inviting the principals here. There's with, with building principals, APs and principals were at 15 people, so I decided not to do that. Their schedules have been hectic a lot lately. So I just wanted to make sure that we made mention of them and I wanted to just go through and acknowledge each of the teams. So obviously we have John Campbell Primary, we have Amanda Scribner and Assistant Principal Cesar Ortiz. At the intermediate school, new principal Jill Starr, Assistant Principal Sarah Hanson, and new to us this year as Assistant Principal Trina Josepian. At the middle school, Mark Galloway has been with us for 20 plus years. Paul Hudson Assistant and our new, new to the district is Caitlin Nation as the other assistant principal there. Our high school team is Colton Monty Principal, Becca Thompson Assistant, Jeff Cochran Assistant and Director of Futures. And also we have Brandon Gillespie, new to us this year, who's our other assistant principal and athletic director. So we have Joe Coscard, who is in charge of all the art alternative programs. So I just really wanted to take a second and have us publicly acknowledge this group of, I think, the best group around. I mean, I, I say that every year and we, we even get, we're even get better sometimes and we're able to replace people when they move on to other things. And I'm just thankful for this group of, of professionals. They've done remarkable work, not just the start of this school year, but really the past year and a half. And so you know what? The kindergarten picture I just realized got left out of there in my, it got skipped over. Let me see if I have it in there, but we've got Melissa Singletary. Yep, it's not in there. When I put this picture in, I went on top of it. I want to make sure we acknowledge Melissa Singletary and Lee Gramps too. I just realized that. At our new Robert Lentz kindergarten. So anyway, there's, there have been some things. I don't know if you've been able to see the features that Heidi's put out online. They've been great or they, she's put them out via email and on Facebook. She asked them some questions about what they would be if they weren't a principal and what their favorite book was as a kid. And so those have been enjoyable to read. So again, just wanted to take a second and acknowledge our great group of leaders for National Principal Month.
Well, yeah, for sure, Chris. We appreciate the kind comments that you made and I think all of us have some one-on-one experience with all of the administrators and I would echo everything that you say, Shane, and from a board perspective. You know, your leadership is certainly wonderful and, and professional as well, but you know, you've got a team under you that, you know, they're at the street level. And so we were appreciate the leadership in their respective buildings and the, the work that they do and, and the Viking spirit that they, that they bring to their teams. And so we would echo your comments and appreciate every single one of them. My understanding is there's 15 principals in the district and you know, that's a, that's a large leadership team. However, they've got a, they've got great people behind them that they're, they're leading. And so we appreciate the work that they do.
Yeah, definitely.
Awesome. Good. Then let's move on to item number three, then the agenda, suggestions or comments from the audience. I saw a couple of guests with us. And so this would be the opportunity, if you're on with us, thank you for joining, first of all. Second of all, if you have some comments to make, I would just say out in the outset, there's a little raised hand button on your screen. Raise your hand and we'll be glad to acknowledge, acknowledge you. So let's stop there and see if there's anybody, Shane, and if there's anybody that's interested in making a comment, we come back to this slide.
I am not seeing anyone.
Hey. One last chance, anybody that's on with us tonight that would like to speak, this is your chance and the opportunity to share your comments. Raise, click your raise, the raised hand button on your screen.
Okay, we're good to go.
Yeah, okay. All right, then we'll move on. The next item is approval of meeting minutes from our September 23rd meeting, which was our regular business meeting and then our study session from October 14th. We've all had a chance to read those and so we need to adopt those meeting minutes. Somebody care to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
All the way from Norway, Dan Peters has, has made the motion. Appreciate that. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor, please indicate with an eye.
All right.
Opposed? Okay, those pass. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. It's got three items on it tonight. Human Resources Action Sheet of Payroll Goods and Services and then a gift and donation. So let's start with the HR action sheet. Chris, anything to highlight or?
Nothing to highlight, just, I wanted to acknowledge that we are still looking for additional staff on the, under the classified umbrella. We have openings, para educator openings, we have bus driver sub openings, we have nutrition openings. It's, we're not alone. We talked to our colleagues and everyone's trying to recruit the best they can. Fortunately, we're pretty much staffed up on our certificated side of things, but it's just the classified side that we're still searching. We have a lot of postings out there right now. So if you know anybody out there that is looking for work, send them our way. We've got lots of opportunities. And so we, we have some action there on the, you can see on the HR action, no changes to that this evening. Tia has done a nice job capturing everything up to date. Any questions on that?
Not here. Okay, yeah, there's quite a bit of action. Seems like this time of year is not quite as much activity, but I certainly understand. I guess I just mentioned, oh shoot, my name escapes me now, but you've got another new, kind of a new person that's posting these and we're seeing those emails and seems like she's doing a really efficient job and so. Appreciate, appreciate her work.
She's doing a great job. Alyssa, she works here in our office. She's, she replaced Kathy Moritz. We just Chad conducted interviews today for our second human resources position that turned over. Chris Miller left us. He went to Akuma School District for a great promotional opportunity for him, professional growth. So hopefully we'll get our second HR person on board soon because Chad and Alyssa have definitely felt the, the load lately. They've done a great jobs keeping up on things, but we're excited to bring on that second person.
Yeah, that's great. How about payroll goods and services, Chris?
I have just one main highlight on the goods and services this month, and that is our, our liability insurance to school, so that, to the SIAW. Schools, Schools Insurance Association of Washington on page five of, of the warrant register is in the amount of $423,887. And we're not alone. I mean, all school districts are in the same boat paying that kind of, maybe not, obviously we all play, pay different amounts based on our buildings and staffing and all of that. But it's expensive, but it's something that obviously we are required to have. So that's the one, being the largest expenditure on the, on the list, I wanted to highlight it tonight.
So I'm curious to know about the asbestos central charge for $12,000.
Yes, we had, and I actually highlighted that one as well when I did my audit of the, the goods and services. We basically have, we have to hire out obviously removal of asbestos. And this bill was on our, the piece of property that we bought with the home that sits on it, right adjacent to the high school. We had to have that abated before we can have it demoed. So that was the bill associated with that.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. All right. And then the third thing on the consent agenda is a donation from Luis Escamilla, who is a Cela alum, I understand, and $1,000 from his business Convenience Lawn Service. And we really appreciate Luis's contribution to our wrestling program. Being a former wrestler myself, I certainly appreciate that. There's always need in the wrestling room for new mats or equipment and other things. So we appreciate Luis's support and the contribution that he's made.
Definitely.
Okay, so that's our consent agenda. I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as it's presented. Any other questions by anyone? All right, all those in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Dan, I think you came in, there must be a little bit of a delay. I heard an eye, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Good, thank you. Okay, move on now to administration. So Mr. Kirby is with us this evening and we are looking forward to our monthly construction report update. Don, turn it over to you.
All right, fantastic. Evening, Board. Good afternoon. We are, we are moving very, very swiftly towards substantial completion on John Campbell. We're tracking about 88% complete. Go ahead and show some slides there, Shane, if you would. We keep going there. I've got some pictures of some of the exterior that we took on Tuesday. Kind of seeing some of the irrigation work that's, that's going in right now. This is, this is on the west side of the, of the project. Paving is pretty well done. The asphalt paving is pretty well done for this project now. Any additional asphalt paving obviously is going to be in the, in the phase, the, the next follow-on phase, but generally now we are looking on, as far as from a, a site improvement, site utilities, type of, type of condition to having all of the infrastructure utilities done. And with regard to the site improvements, the, you know, we've got some curb gutter and sidewalks that we're still doing, we're about 70% with regard to that. You can go ahead and flip through some of these slides, Shane, if you want. Good picture, looking there on the, on the left-hand side of the screen, that's, that's, that's swinging around the backside, west looking east into that area. Fencing is going, we're proximally about 70% completion with the fencing and the gates for the project. As I said, this is, this is obviously the bus loop looking, looking west to east towards the existing John Campbell. Again, majority of all the site utilities now are fairly well done and moving towards, you know, getting the, the, you know, the exterior kind of buttoned up and getting ready for the, for the next phase. Obviously we've got about, you know, the month of November will have probably quite a bit of landscaping going on with irrigation. I think we're going to be okay with that. We'll, we'll kind of watch that, you know, we've come, you know, it's, it's sometimes difficult to get into the, you know, the, the, you know, later months of the year and make sure our plantings are good. But that doesn't necessarily relieve any of the contractors or the landscaping outfit from, you know, making sure that we get at least one full growing season for everything, making sure that, you know, all of the irrigation systems working on and the plants live and the grass, so. Love this shot. This is the courtyard here, just beautiful concrete. I don't know if you guys have walked through this, but just the, just the concrete elements alone are just, just really, really great. I believe the concrete work for, for generally the most part has just been really fabulous out there with, with the site concrete. Next slide. Moving inside, kitchen, big, beautiful kitchen. We are probably about 90% done. We'll be looking for, you know, starting up some of that equipment here in the next couple of weeks. I think I've got a couple of shots of the kitchen there. I think I've got a shot of that beautiful revolving oven there on the right-hand side, which is really, really going to facilitate, I think, the district's needs. It's, it's just a wonderful big kitchen. I'd love to, love to be a food service person and something like that if I knew how to cook, so anyhow. Next slide.
Oh, just a second. There you go, sticking on me.
Okay, with regard to kind of the interior finishes, folks, you know, you know, painting and acoustical ceilings and floorings and vinyl wall fabric, you know, again, you know, 90% complete. We are, we are really moving towards, towards a good completion. This is obviously in the, in the Viking zone there with regard to looking on the, on the stage there. And most of that work is done, the, the, the acoustical ceiling tiles are, are being dropped as in process. A lot of times we'll keep those out to make sure that we can get into those interstitial areas. But we are now moving into what we call the, you know, some of the, we are now commissioning the systems. We are testing and balancing the systems. And so I specifically referenced the, the mechanical and the electrical systems more so than anything. So we are, we're really looking good. This is a picture of the administration area, the reception area on the left and then looking down the hallway. Just beautiful. I think the quality is good. I love the, I love the dimensions of, as far as the architecture concerned too. They've next done a really good job as far as looking at the, at the coordination of it. So next slide. Gymnasium, this is one area where we're generally, you know, on, on schedule, we, we are working towards the striping now. But this is what your gym floor looks like now that, that it's down. This will be one of the last areas that comes, you know, online. As I had mentioned to the board earlier, what our plan is really is to, is to complete the upper levels of the project, then move down to the first level and work ourselves out of the discovery and the innovation lab. So kind of moving towards the center of it and then moving out. The gymnasium though, will, is kind of a standalone area that we're, we're working towards. So we're trying to get the logo pretty well detailed out now, so we should see activity there to finish that out, I would think probably in the next couple of weeks. So it's, it's coming along, coming along. Nice picture of the, just a typical classroom. You can see the level of finishes, you can see the level of completion. So it, it's, it's just really, really coming along. I mean, the marker boards are done, Prometheans are pretty well installed, case where cabinetry. Really, like we said, when we're in commissioning and we're in testing and balancing, making it sure the systems operate okay. So next slide. So yeah, I think I pretty much got everything here that we talked about. One mention on the play areas, the, the, the play equipment on the exterior is going to start next week. And then we will move ahead with pouring the, the play surfaces after that. So the, the, the north and the south areas of the place or play areas will be working on in the, in the month of November. Let's see what else. Yeah, so we talked a little bit and I believe our FFNE are our furniture fixtures and equipment as far as the furniture. We're scheduled to basically take that on around the 21st of November is what our schedule looks like. Contractor is still calling substantial completion for the building and the building proper, the area of 1119. Again, we talked about that as far as what the, you know, the difference was from the, from the 1029 to the 1119, which was basically we had some fire delay in there and I think we had a couple smaller changes that just basically moved us, you know, you know, 20, what, 21 days or whatever. So no big deal to the district. The, the phase one and phase B, the parking along third and the offsite Bartlett is pretty well complete. And now we're looking forward to the demolition of the existing campus, which starts on the 3rd of January in 2022, so. A quick shot of the latest schedule that validates what we're talking about there. I just highlighted contractor completion date of 1119, which essentially basically is they're going to tell us you were substantially complete, punch the building, make sure we're telling you what we say is correct. We, we actually have already started to, to do the punch list, especially on the upper areas and moving down. And so I anticipate that to go fairly good. Punch lists are basically things that say, hey, you're missing, you know, this or that, or this doesn't operate and we want to make sure and capture as much as we can on the punch list. So we don't have to move any of those to warranty, so. Budget-wise, I don't know if you can see that very well, but I'll give you a, a quick, a quick summary. Basically, we're about 64 proposal requests. Yeah, that's a good shot, Shane, thanks. I've got two estimates in there as far as things that we have yet to price. But overall, half a million dollars plus sales tax, you know, 542,000 against a 1.25 million dollar contingency. That equates to basically about 43% of the contingency used and we're 88% of the project complete. So it's still, you know, it's just, it's great. So really, really a good, a, a good project. Next slide. With regard to.
Now that I messed with that slide size, it won't go to the next slide for me.
Oh, is that right?
Try this. There we go.
Okay, so just real quick with regard to how those changes fall out, that 541 or 542,000, whatever it is. You can kind of see, I try and give you guys an idea as far as where those costs are originating from and, and, and the dollar value associated with those. Jeff, I think you and I, or you had asked me about this question the last month, but I just keep it as a running log and kind of show you guys what, what it looks like as a, as a percentage of, as far as who we think created it and what the dollar value is there, so. I think that's about it. We are just really, really pleased, I think, with the quality of, of the project. Very pleased with our contractor. We see no reason why he can't meet the substantial completion date. Very little in supply chain logistics issues that, you know, Chervanel has experienced. There's a couple, you know, interior signage items, but certainly things that are not going to hold up a substantial completion or a, you know, building occupancy from the district standpoint, so. That's all I got. Any questions, guys? I think we're good then, right?
Exciting to see. Yeah, it's really each month, the new pictures should really tell the story, you know.
Oh, they do. Yeah.
Every day and we get to see it, you know, once a month or so and you can really see the difference in the changes.
I, I thought Lynch was good, but I got to tell you, I think John Campbell really is, is just beautiful, just beautiful. So I really like it, so.
While, while we're at this point in the, talking about the construction, Chris, and she can chime in when I'm done here, but I want to give you an update and in terms of the building, again, yeah, we're super excited and we'd love it and everything's on schedule to get us moved in and that's what we're planning on doing. The one hiccup we're running into, we just ran into it in the last 48 hours. With everybody else, like supply chain is, has become an issue and we have, although we've, you know, ordered six plus months ago and, and whatnot, we've run into supply chain issues. We were supposed to be able to start, we're going to start with FFNE on the 22nd with furnitures, fixtures and equipment, that's FFNE on the 22nd, but that stuff is going to be coming sporadically now throughout late November into December and now even into January. For that reason, and I talked to Jeff a little bit about this today, we are going to recommend that we take the January 3rd and January 4th, which are the first two days back for first and second graders and have those be non-school days. I've worked with OSPI on that. We have plenty of instructional hours. Our issue is we're not going to be able to have the classrooms set up. You know, originally we had the last week of December for teachers to be able to be in there and get their rooms set up. They're not going to be able to do that with as late as things are getting in. So our hope right now is that we can get them in late and some things will lag into January. But we'll have enough to get going and so the January 3rd and 4th, they were looking at waiver days for parents, for the school district for those two days for first and second grade only. With having the fourth, that Tuesday be sort of an open house day, so, so people can come in and see the building. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that is, while we're very excited and this is a minor bump in the road of what have, what could have been during COVID. Actually, I mean, we could have had a lot worse circumstances with supply chain that we've had. So our, our stuff is actually sitting off the port of Los Angeles right now, sitting out in cargo ships, just waiting to come in. And so that's kind of where we're at with that. Chris, do you have anything to add?
Just you, you mentioned it, but the, the order that's looking like it's going to be received in January is the order that has all the student chairs in it. So over a 900 student chairs will be, July, January 17th, the earliest that they'll be here. So no problem though, we're going to move the older chairs over or our current chairs over there until the new ones come and we'll make it work. So our maintenance and custodial team, Frank Reno, he's awesome. He just said, well, we'll make it happen when they have to move everything. So that's going to be interesting but exciting.
Yeah, we'll have people in there, you know, from all the way through the end of December and end of January doing installation. Because when these things come in, they come in on a semi truck and they come in boxes and they get installed, I mean, assembled and installed on site. So you're talking about, you know, 600 desks to actually physically install, I mean, to build and put in. So anyway, we're, again, it's, I think it's a minor hiccup, but it is a small one that we wanted to share with you.
So earlier today when we spoke, Shane, my question was the communication to the families that this impacts, you know, we published a school year calendar and of course this changes that a little bit and I don't, you know, personally wouldn't see it as a huge thing, but of course the communication is key on a deal like this. So can you fill us in on what the plan is or what Amanda's done so far in terms of making parents and families aware of what's coming?
Yeah, Amanda, the last few weeks has been providing, all of our buildings sent out a Friday communication. She's been providing some updates on, on the move and the calendar. And so she'll do that within this and we'll do it multiple times over the next few weeks so that people have plenty of opportunity to plan. And obviously, you know, we, Amanda and I talked and we'll work with people that have extenuating circumstances and just doesn't work, we'll try to figure something out. But we're trying to get people plenty of notice. I mean, we just literally found this out in the last couple of days that we're going to have these delays and so. But again, I, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely communicate it as often as we can, starting now, so.
I believe Amanda announced to parents last Friday about the, the first couple of days in January.
Oh, she did start it already? Okay.
Yeah, last Friday.
Good. And I have not received any calls as of yet, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, good. Well, the good news with this is we, we, we've got desks and chairs and things that we can use in the meantime. Means a double move, I guess, a little bit and, you know, brand new building with some older equipment, you know, like we, you know, move into a brand new house and bring your old furniture in, right? So, but is what it is and supply chain is, you know, it's squeezed in every industry right now. So it, it's not a, not a total surprise that, you know, we'd be running into this a little bit. So it, it's not a, not a total surprise that, you know, we'd be running into this a little bit. Any other questions?
Yeah, if you have questions for about that, about that, or for Don, before we let Don take off.
You guys are not alone in your FFP struggle either. I, you know, the other two projects that I'm currently working on, we've got, we've got issues with, with supply chain on that too. Um, Sunny Side and Mount Adams are in the same boat, so everybody's feeling it. Yeah.
Well, I would just suspect that even though there's forecasting as to when might, you might receive those orders. Um, you know, I'm not sure that you can count on that right now either. You know, they're looking at January and thinking, all right, this is the date or the window and, you know. I'm sure you've already thought about it, but being prepared for something else to change and get it switched over to something else. Um, but like we said, the good news is that teachers will be in the building. They'll have uh students in the brand new building. Um, they might be sitting in the older chair, but we're still going to be teaching kids in our brand new building. So that's, that's the good news and that's the positive spin on it.
Agreed.
Cool. Thank you, Don. As always, we appreciate your work and the things that you do for us.
Okay, guys, see ya.
Okay, um, good, boy, that's exciting. It's really getting close, isn't it? When do we get to come see it, Shane?
Anytime.
Yeah, we should think about that.
Yeah.
I don't know, let's, let's talk offline.
Yeah, we'll coordinate, we'll coordinate.
Okay, cool. All right, um, move on to B and then administration. Um, there's thirteen um resolutions here, and this is a second wave of these. We had this, I think, at the last uh business meeting where we're, we're having to place people in position to teach, and they're not um quite certified in their area. But this is the um RCW in allowing us to do that. And so I will stop there and let Chris fill in the gaps and give us any more information that you'd like to.
I think there's eleven here that are um resolutions, resolutions associated with the out of endorsement assignment. So many of these teachers, they have conditional certificates, they're working towards their continuing, um, you know, status and endorsement. And so this is typical for school districts this time of year to bring a handful of these to the school board. I don't recall the last meeting having some, but maybe we did and I just didn't remember. But I thought, I thought that these were, anyway, doesn't matter. But it's a typical process all school districts go through um every year. It's rare that you wouldn't have at least one of these and trying to find qualified teachers. We feel great about our hires, but we do have these folks that are working towards their continuing um endorsements.
So in each case here, uh, Chris, these individuals then are um required to complete the proper endorsement um, in a certain, you know, given time, right?
Yes, by the end of the school year, they're required, it'll be a June or, or, or end of June deadline. I'm not sure what HR has said on that. Uh, but typically, it would, the requirement would be sometime the end of June, and they would be required to be uh fully endorsed in their subject area that they teach, or they won't be continued for the following year.
Thanks.
And this air, each one of these resolutions, if you're interested on the details down at the bottom section there, it, it gives you a snapshot of each teacher's situation and what they're um moving towards.
Sure, and I, I stand corrected. I see a note from Tiara, um, sounds like the last time we saw these was last January. So I don't know what I was thinking. Maybe it was my looking at this a week ago, trying to get ready for tonight's meeting, but so I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. So can we um approve all of these and vote on these um all at once?
I believe so.
It'd be resolutions twenty-two through thirty-four.
Okay, well, there's a cancellation of warrants, it looks like a different resolution.
Yeah, that's separate. I'll talk about that next.
Okay, so it's twenty-two through thirty-two. Then it looks like they're all the same. Okay, so this is a group of teachers that are um teaching for us, um, and that they've got, they're, they're working on their sort of, the proper certification, and we're going to allow them to handle, uh, to be in their position until such time um with our approval. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve resolutions twenty-two, twenty-one through thirty-two, twenty-one.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Any other questions by anyone? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of um approving these resolutions, please indicate with an eye. Eye? Opposed? Okay, that passes. And then the last one in this list is the cancellation of warrants. Chris?
Yes, and this is a, a resolution. We're recommending that the school board adopt the cancellation of these old warrants um as driven by RCW thirty-nine fifty-six oh four zero. And this is another resolution that comes before the board every year. Some of the warrants on here are older than a year, and Stephanie's done a nice job catching these up.
So somebody didn't cash a check for twenty-two hundred dollars?
And no.
How about that?
I'm sure it's been out there, but resolution number thirty-three, since these, there's a, there's a gap. Is resolution number, has that been acted on? Just out of curiosity, since we skipped to thirty, we went from thirty-two to.
Very good, Kellyanne, you passed the test today that you found the missing res- where's, where's Waldo resolution thirty-three?
Well, actually, thirty-three was removed from the agenda because Marla Taparo uh received her certificate, and it was no longer necessary.
Oh, well, congratulations to her.
Congratulations, and never a doubt that Tiara didn't, he did not miss a detail. She never does.
There's not, there's no errors there.
All right, well, thank you, Tiara.
Well, we're going to send Kellyanne a Viking hat to wear at her next, uh, at her next uh employee meeting at Memorial. All right, well, I'll move that we uh, uh, approve resolution number thirty-four dash twenty-one, cancellation of warrants. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate with an eye. Eye?
Eye.
Eye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Hey, there we go. We're on to reports number seven, and we'll start with Alicia, our executive director for student learning. Alicia, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So I, I just wanted to give you guys some updates on things that I had spoke to the last couple of months, um, but just where we're at with them. So I'd mentioned to you guys that we had started a district MTSS committee where we were having representatives and leadership from each of our sites, as well as the district level. And so with our MTSS process, where we have our tier ones, where it's looking at what we do with all students and what we call the core, which is the main time that students get all the same um type of courses. Um, we also have tier two, which is where we have our targeted opportunities that are specific on specific skills, and it's for a shorter period of time. So I wanted to let you know that all of our buildings have started some type of tier-two supports for their students. Some of them are starting to get into their second round, or they will be within the next couple of weeks. Um, but it's pretty exciting to see that our buildings either are doing ELA math or social emotional learning. There's a, or a combination of all three, uh, but really providing some opportunities for our students to have targeted time. And that's both where there may be areas of need and the students haven't met mastery yet in that, or we're extending for students, so it's students in all the continuum. Um, but, but it's been new. We haven't had that at every building, especially extending some of those lessons for students that might have already reached mastery. So I just wanted to give you an update that our buildings are moving forward with that. It's, and we're progressing and learning along the way, but it's, it's nice to see that things are happening in all of our sites for that support. Um, also, as part of the committee work, we have our rigorous engaging classrooms committee, which also is focusing on universally designed for learning and the inclusionary practices. We've been doing that for a few years, but we separated it out with MTSS just because we really wanted to focus on the structures with the MTSS committee. And the rec really is to look at what is happening in the classroom. And so we have been, um, we being myself and Betty Lopez, Hunter System and Christie, um, Irian have been meeting with district, our building leadership and doing walkthroughs with the rigorous engaging classroom look fours that were created a few years back with the, the district committees that looked at what did we want as our flagship um opportunities with the rec and those class, those look fours that were developed that had to do with relationships, lesson clarity, challenge and student voice. So as of today, we've been in fifty classrooms across the district. We've gathered data to look and see where, where are their strengths, and we'll be accumulating that data as we go throughout the whole year. Um, we're sharing that with our district MTSS, and the buildings are sharing that data with their staff. And the idea is we just do these really quick snapshots that we walk into classrooms. So it's not the idea of what we're not seeing, it's what we see. So really keeping it from a strengths-based approach. Um, seeing a lot when it comes to relationships, and we can see there are strong relationships between our staff and students. And then we can see where we need to start um looking at what we're doing for lesson clarity and challenging our students, and student voice is pretty strong as well. But that's been exciting to be in the classroom, seeing the teachers and the students and getting to do that with the administration. And then the last piece is based off that as well as with um, with those look fours, what the rec committee will be doing is really to start investigating those look fours to see, do we need to consider them, consider anything differently using our universal design for learning lens? So when we think of access for our students and really having an inclusive classroom, is there anything that needs to be changed? Is there anything that needs to be added or something that needs to be deleted? So we have, we're, we're busy in going into classrooms looking that way. And then we're also going to, over the course of the year, really review those and see, is there some things we need to change? So that when we're doing these walkthroughs and we're, what we expect to see in classrooms, it's really allowing for our students to access um and engage into, in the instruction, no matter what their unique abilities may be. So it's pretty exciting that we have people, like I said, from all the buildings, from lots of different roles within the district. Um, and we've been busy just really ensuring that we have strong instructional practices in classrooms for our students. So that's what I wanted to share this week. Any questions?
Excellent, Alicia. It sounds like the committee work continues and you're moving forward with the things that you brought us a month ago is, is continuing on and developing and evolving as, as we go. Appreciate that. I did need to notice, um, I think an email that we all got from um Character Strong on MTSS support. And I know we use Character Strong, I believe, at the middle school, if I remember right. And I just didn't, I didn't know if we were tapping into their offering.
Yeah, so we're using Character Strong third through high school. So it's CIS, the middle school and the high school. Um, so that has been, and we've, I think we've used it for varying amount of years. Shane might be able to give the specific years, but for varying years, depending on which site. Um, but we have been utilizing that, and they use it with an advisory, and they also use it within their homeroom classroom. So um, it is a tool that we've been using to help support our students. The nice thing about Character Strong is that it does have, you know, lessons that you can choose to use, pieces of it. It's, it's got a lot to it. We're not using everything that's in the system, but you can kind of tailor it. We've been using it, a lot of it in regards to what the word of the month is too, so that there's opportunities for students to really understand what those words mean and what is it, um, what does it look like and feel like and hear like when, when that, um, that character trait is being exemplified. So, yeah, we have been using that, that product.
Yeah. Good, my opinion is I, I like that program. I think they've got, they've got some great offerings and support and a great, great resource for our district.
Yeah, I would agree.
Alicia, I just have a real quick, I hope it's a quick question, and that's, Shane, at our last meeting, you, you spoke of how MTSS is a real focus for you with your, with our principals who are celebrating this month, that that's something that they're going to be, uh, that, that your conversations with them will be guided by the work on MTSS. And so with, at, at the teacher level, of course, it's been a couple of years ago now, but there was so much focus on a redesign of the teacher evaluation process in, in, in the state and, and various models. Remind me, where are we in, in terms of how the work that you're doing, Alicia, and those many, many trips into the classroom, how that aligns with teacher evaluation?
Well, just, I'll let Alicia talk, but I will tell you, Kellyanne, that that was almost ten years ago now that we were.
Ah!
Just a couple of years.
I guess I've been on the board a little long.
Yeah, it was one, it was like my last year of uh teaching and learning that we started that, so anyway, but.
Well, I, I just appropriately aged myself.
Yes, so I'll let, I'll let Alicia chime in if I have anything to add.
Well, no, and I would say that it, it, it directly aligns. Because when we look at the teacher evaluation, um, part of it is how do we design our instruction based on what we know our students' needs? And so when we really think of the work that we're doing with rigorous engaging classrooms and with universal design for learning, that is all about how do we pre, how do we plan so that when we're in the classroom, there's options for all students? And so that's really our, our tier one or within our MTSS. And then as we know that there's students that come throughout, whether it's they need extensions or they need some additional support, then you do that same process, but it's based on the skill. And so they're directly aligned, because our goal really is that you'd only have tier one, right? That you're meeting the needs of your students all in, in their core, that we don't need this additional support. But we know we do, there's, there's for a variety of reasons, we, we need to provide some additional opportunities for students, and that's where that tier, that tier two comes in. So even though, yes, we're, we are providing a lot of support at the building level to the principals and to the teams, the principals are doing that work. So whatever we do, what we've been trying to do a lot this year is that we model with them during our times that we have our leadership together, that they can take what we do and they can take it right directly to their buildings and do that same, whether it's, you know, taking instructional materials that we have and bringing it to them or um different activities we might do just to help kind of make connections to what we're doing and why that's important for our students in the classroom. So um, between modeling and then just what, um, what the, the, the intent is, is ensuring access for students is directly aligned to the teacher evaluation.
And I'll echo that and just say that um, MTSS, for those listening, multi-tiered systems of support, if you think about that as like a bookshelf and the things on it are the resources that you utilize uh to meet kids at the varying levels of where they're at. So the, actually, then the, the activities and the things that are happening in each of those tiers, I'm drawing from those specifically for principal evaluation as well. So it's all nested together, which is something that I've dreamed of for a long time. And Alicia and Hunter and I, we all talked about it this summer, is trying to create a, uh, uh, so that the work you're doing um is not for like an evaluation, is not just a checkbox, it's actually really uh aligned with what's happening both in the classrooms and in the buildings from the teacher and principal level. So just wanted to share that piece as well, that um, it's really been a, a great venue for taking evidence. And we call evidence during the evaluation process and being able to show that, and actual, actually show uh action items, growth and that kind of thing. So anyway, just want to add that piece.
Yeah. Well, MTSS focuses on um students who need additional assist, assistance for those that are identified in the various tiers. Um, but um, going along with that and sort of, I guess, anec- anecdotally and, and be a sidebar question, Alicia, this is the first full year that we've had kids in the classroom for two years. And while we, you know, started back last spring, um, it, it's got to be, got to feel somewhat more normal, I guess, this year. But I guess my question is, do we know and have we, are, are, are kids basically just thriving on the idea of being in a classroom and having those connections with teachers and their friends? And I mean, is, is, is that impacting, in your opinion, um, you know, the performance and or behaviors of some of these kids, knowing that a year ago they were, you know, trying to learn online and not being around their friends and struggling that way, and now they're not? And so, yeah, that's a broad question, I know. But is there any kind of response you might have to it?
Well, I, 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 I think no matter what um time period we're in or whether students have been in a more structured setting like they are now or more unstructured where they may have been when they were home and, and doing learning remotely, relationships are always important, right? I mean, that has to be something that we emphasize all the time, is how we can ensure that our students feel supported, feel cared about in our educational settings, whether that's remotely or in person. So I would say, yes, I think it, it most definitely is, is, is a benefit. I think where, where the, where the compounding of all this comes in, because you always have transitioning from one building to another and then just, you know, just kind of coming back to school even from summer, is that we just had multiple years with a lot of things going on for students that also the adults were going through too, right? So there's this kind of compounding of whether you, you have our students that have had some, some tough times through the, and, and even ones that maybe it wasn't tough, it was unstructured, right? And so, or they were very isolated. And so then you bring them into a school system, there could be six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred or more kids. or they were very isolated. And so then you bring them into a school system that could be 600, 700, 800 or more kids that, that's tough. So those relationships are really, really important. And it's the same thing for our teachers too, right? I mean, we've, we haven't had, you know, where they've had all the students there and all of that for a couple of years as well, where it's been a full year of that. So definitely super important. And I think it just compounds it with what's happened the last couple of years with the pandemic.
Yeah. And I, and I would add to that, I think she's spot on. And you know, what we've just our, our kids that are experiencing like the tier three, which is the most neediest of their circumstances. We have seen more extreme behaviors. I mean, you know, I, I would say that our tier one and tier two systems are working well, but we're, we're seeing our tier three in specifically behavior. And maybe you've heard this too, I don't know, but just it, it has been a challenge for, for our building administrators and for our teachers just to navigate the behaviors that, you know, if you think about a second grader at this point, you know, they're, this is the first time they've been in school for a full year, you know, so there are those challenges. And I think that's how our MCSS systems are able to respond. You have, remember we're now we're close to what 55% Chris, as a district in terms of free reduced lunch, we have a lot of single parent families. There was a lot of trauma throughout the past 18 months that we're seeing that a little bit, just to be honest. I mean, and I would tell you that staff would say the same thing. While we're addressing those things systemically, it's still a challenge.
Well, it would make sense. I mean, you think about the last 18 months and to your point, the second grader, and this is the first experience they've had in the school environment with the, you know, the rigor that we provide the students that come to our school. So we appreciate the work that's being done and the recognition of, of that and, and rolling up our sleeves to, you know, to correct it. And I'll go out on a limb and bet that even though we've got some restrictors and some rules that surround us in terms of providing in-person learning now with, you know, with requirements and mandates and things like that, it's still, it's not anything that anybody likes, but it's still way better than remote learning. And, and so to have the opportunity to see kids in classrooms and, and observe and to provide that support immediately because we see them and we're with them and, and it's not delayed in a, like it would be in a remote setting. You know, some of the inconveniences are well worth, worth it as we try and bring these kids along through our process.
I'd agree.
All right, Alicia, thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, move on then to Ms. Skakar, Associate Superintendent for District Operations, Chris.
Okay. Well, I just, I don't have a lot tonight. I know you're disappointed. I have my enrollment update and then a couple other quick up, just FYIs, but other than that, we'll, we'll get going on the enrollment update. So you can see there in, and you all received the email as well, our student enrollment count for October, 3,572, September was 3,000, 3,560, almost four. So you see a slight, slight increase there, eight FTE from January or from September to October. So on average, our enrollment right now for those two months is 3,568, which is just under 30 FTE under projection. The good news is we're up by 53 from last October. So we are slowly seeing our enrollment recover, which is a really good thing. More kids coming back. Although if we ended the year at 30 under projection, that's about $259,000 short on what we projected, but I think we'll recover in part there. So I don't think the enrollment loss is going to be, obviously it's not going to be like it was last year. So I think we're, we're getting, we're in pretty good shape right now. We have, we, as you know, with our teachers contract, we pay overload pay for over certain levels if the teachers have over certain amount of kids. So we've processed our first round of overload pay in October, on October 1 for the, based on those counts in classrooms. And then there's a payment made over the course of a few months. And then February is the second time those are counted. So we do have some, some higher class sizes in certain areas. I know our, there's dual, our dual classes at CIS are a little bit high and and a few other areas. So we're working directly with principals on those areas and, and providing the best supports we can as a, as a district for the building. So Shane, do you want to add anything on that or Alicia?
I don't think so. I think you covered it, Alicia.
Okay. The other quick, couple, couple of quick highlights, I'm excited. Shane and I are excited for the November board meeting, November 9. We have Mark Pressing coming in from EST 112 as our financial advisor. We, as we've mentioned before, we were looking at refinancing our 2012 bonds. We are now at a, a really good point that we can refinance before the March 1st call date. So in November, Mark will be bringing information to the school board about what that looks like, the steps to be made. But I will give you the good news right now, the projections by both DA Davidson and Mark Pressing, we're looking at saving taxpayers 5.3 to 5.5 million dollars on those 2012 bonds. So that's just a wonderful thing for the taxpayers in the Seela School District boundaries. So we're excited to report out on that when the time comes. That's a great celebration for the Seela community. So, and a great celebration for Seela School District. We love to get back to the community. So that's one, one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing, just so you know, we will be having a public surplus sale in an odd time this year because of the opening of the new school. We will be holding a public surplus sale on December 29th. And we need to do that because the new building is opening and we'll be moving a lot of all the new furniture in. We also have some stuff moving, moving from the old school to the new school. But we'll have a lot of things that are just antiquated, really not in good shape that, that will end up probably going down with the building that does, that don't sell at the surplus sale. But we have a very tight window, just quickly. December 17th is the last day of school before winter break. That evening, our custodial crew with Frank's, Frank's leadership will be moving all the teacher classrooms. And like I mentioned earlier, all the student chairs over to the new building. So they'll be working over the course of the weekend to get that done. So that we have Monday, the 20th, Tuesday and Wednesday. So the 20th through the 23rd to prepare for the surplus sale. We'll be having the sale right in the building, the three, three buildings over at John Campbell on December 29th, but we'll be preparing for that on those three days and then Monday, the 27th. We'll have private schools in on the 28th and we will hold the surplus sale on December 29th. We'll have some other items in the surplus sale that aren't at John Campbell, like we have an old vehicle that's, we're going to put in surplus sales and a few other things. But we'll have kitchen equipment and some other things that we're not going to be utilizing in the new building or other buildings, but obviously we're going to move equipment that we can use to other locations in the district so that we don't give up anything that, that we can, that we need. So it's going to be a tight turnaround. The teacher staff walkthrough will happen right on the 20th. So right after that, the move takes place over that weekend. We'll have a teacher staff walkthrough so they can get things that they can use in their classrooms. And then we'll move into our preparation for the sale. So it's going to be very quick. We'll get it done on the 29th. And so teachers will be able to, or will be then able to turn over the old building to the contractor for asbestos removal. So, and I believe that happens on January 3rd. Is that correct, Shane?
Yeah, that's correct. They, I mean, there's a very tight window for the asbestos prevention, the abatement process and then to get demolitions.
I bet it won't be 115 degrees in there either.
Correct.
No.
So I'll be looking for helpers for the surplus sale. If any of you are interested, I know Dan won't be participating. If anybody else wants to, let them know.
Fair enough.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right, good. Moving on then to Shane, our superintendent, several things to report on. So I'll turn it over to you, Shane.
Yeah. And I try to put these things together a little bit graphically so you could see tonight. One of the things I'm trying to do consistently is provide you with a monthly update on, on COVID numbers in our region and our district. So I'll start with that. So this is just an overall look at the case rate, the last 14 days in Yakima County. And so you can see that from back that, that window and starting in September 18th to where we are now, there's been a nice drop, but you can also see a little bit of a flattening out. So that's just a, and I think you'll see those numbers mirrored as we kind of move into what we look like as a district. This represents the total percentage of, of the cases in Yakima County that are school age kids. Remember they define school age kids as five years old through 18 years old, regardless of whether or not they're enrolled in a school district. So you can see since early September, when a lot of districts started, the case rate has remained at between 23 and 25% of the total, right? So if you think about the total amount of cases in the county, it's these percentages make up school aged kids. Obviously in the summer it was lower as we've gotten to school, it's, it's gotten higher. Moving forward into our cumulative cases, this is one I showed you, I'm going to give you a building by building breakdown here, which will be helpful. But so we have had a 154 students and 26 staff to this point in the year who have tested positive. The change from our September meeting, there's 96 additional students and 15 additional staff. So that's kind of a look at where you see, again, not very surprising to see our secondary students really have more. I think CIS was one that we were surprised at last time we talked, but again, you're looking at third through fifth graders being, you know, active, still not maybe with, not without parents, but very active outside of the classroom in the household and not vaccinated. But again, this is just a look at what that has been over the last three months, two and a half months plus of school now. So now I wanted to, this is shown with a, a graph that gives you an indication of how the cases have grown. So this is for the Early Learning Center, Robert Lentz. So our baseline being back on September 17th, looking at two student cases and zero staff cases. If you look at over the course of the last several weeks, you know, we're, we've peaked out at about seven cases total at Robert Lentz for students and we've Seela Middle School. Similar story. Uptick mid to late September, relatively flat since. Staff again has been flat fairly much since late September, excuse me. High school, obviously they started out a little higher at their baseline with athletics starting prior to school starting. And then though they've actually fairly stayed fairly flat over the last several weeks. And again, staff has remained flat as well. So I, I did not put the intermediate, I'm sorry, the alternative school in there because they're small staff and they've actually had one case for a student and one case for a staff since September. That number has just stayed consistent. So
Shane, you said at the beginning, this, this is a cumulative numbers, right? So
Yeah, and yeah, exactly. So I mean, so if you look at the high school, this cumulative number, which I believe is 63, I don't have the data point right here where my, at the top of this line, that's cumulative cases, but it kind of shows you how it's grown or not grown over time. And again, the high school, so they hit their high point, you know, back on October 3rd. So it's, it's basically, yeah, it is cumulative, but it shows the growth over time from when we, our original baseline was back on September 17th.
Doesn't mean we have 53 high school students that are positive right now because the beginning, you know, those that had it in early September, they're, you know, they're through it now.
Correct. This, yeah, this is, the, the reason I liked, I wanted to show this graphic was just so you can see the trajectory of cases. You know, obviously we're looking for spikes and dips and that kind of thing. And so this just gives us a picture of what the cases have looked like since our baseline to where we are now. So the next piece I wanted to share, and you maybe saw this in the paper, and I know that Sarah had asked about a little while back, a little bit more of a breakdown. We just turned that report into the state. It turned out to be a lot more cumbersome of a report than what we had imagined. What they were looking at from the state level is, you know, staff that are directly around kids versus staff that are not versus district office or district personnel that anyway, so trying to put all that in terms of usable data, they didn't ask for it by building. So that's what we're looking at now because we had to get the original data in. Chris Reichdahl, the Superintendent of Public Instruction had a press conference today and he gave the numbers for the state of Washington in general. And, you know, it was right around 90%. It was 90% for classroom teachers, 86 to 88 for non-classroom teachers. So, you know, they, he rounded up. But I would show you that, you know, we mirror both the state and local level. In fact, I think at the local level, you know, I don't know if you saw the article in the paper last Saturday, but it gave many of the Yakima County School District's vaccination status numbers. But the, you know, we're at 87.2% fully vaccinated. And of that 12.8 that remains, we're at 11.3 religious exemption and 1.5 medical exemption. So I think our numbers mirror both of the region and the state level. And I, I think that's a good thing. So I, I'd pause there for both the COVID numbers and the vaccination numbers before I move on to see if there are any questions.
Did I see in the in the paper here also that out of all of this in the October 18th deadline, that we had one, one person that we separated from because
That's a, that's a good question, Jeff. So yeah, I think we had one person who elected not to go through either a leave or an exemption process. And so they separated from us. That process is nearly complete. But I think, I don't remember, Chris, if you read the article, wasn't it point three, it was a point three percent as a state or point two percent as a state that was actually separated from employment as a result of the mandate.
Yeah, I think.
It was point two or point three.
I think it was point three.
Yeah. Yeah. So we were again with one employee that chose not to go through either process and so separated on the 18th.
On one, I think at one point you were sort of looking at potential of, you know, seven, eight, 10, something like that.
Yeah.
Maybe so.
Yeah. I mean, this, this represents, this graphic right here represents 530 people. So, you know, 529 or basically, and you know, I, I guess now in retrospect, I put this graphic together earlier today, I could have put the slice of the one person that was not either of these, which is a reality, but it is, there is one out of the 530 that we separated from.
Thanks for adding that in there.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks for the question.
And we did have a, just a small handful of employees as well classified that elected to take a leave of absence versus.
I think we had two, right? We had two that took a leave.
Yeah, two or three.
Right. And the leave of absence, you know, meets the mandate requirement because they are not with us at this point and they'll have to make a decision down the road, whether or not they want to in, in, you know, unless things change, if they want to provide an exemption request and/or become vaccinated.
I see a question in chat from an attendee and just to respond to that person, thanks for the question. We can't respond to a question like that, especially since we don't have all those details. So apologize if we can't be more, more interactive with you on that one, but that's not something that we are in a position to comment on at this time.
Well, Jeff, actually I will say, because this was part of what I was going to say next. Actually I didn't, I just looked at the question and it was something that I anticipated coming up from one of the board members. So I just had prepared to talk about it a little bit, that the vaccination for five through 12 year olds, five through 11 five through twelve-year-olds, five through eleven-year-olds, as you've heard that there are, you know, as early as next week, might be going to become available for five through eleven-year-olds. I, I can tell you that at the state level, not state in terms of the governor's office, but state in terms of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. He has heard from school districts around the state and he is advocating at this point that that not be a mandate, that it is something that we hold off on. Obviously, there are other vaccination mandates that are already in place. But in terms of COVID for five to eleven-year-olds, or actually would be five to eighteen-year-olds if it was a school-aged mandate. That has been requested to the governor that he hold off on that and, and give it more time. And so I, again, I can't, your guess is as good as mine is what comes out of Olympia. I just know there's advocacy to hold off for a little while. I think the main concern is that just with the polarization of vaccination that we, districts like ours and many others across the state would experience a dramatic drop in enrollment if that were to happen at this point in time with as polarizing as it is. So anyway, agree or not, agree, I know that that's something that has come up at our state level meetings over the last three or four weeks. People have been asking, is that going to happen? There is no indication right now from the governor's offices that that's going to happen. And then the State Superintendent of Public Instruction is advocating for that to be held off at this point.
Good to know. That's good news and fresh news for, for us. So appreciate that additional information.
Yeah. Okay, I'll just move on to a couple more, just other COVID notes. Some have asked about what are the accommodations for unvaccinated staff? So we're doing weekly self-administered testing. That means we, we have a system in place where staff can come to locations in the district and do a self-administered nasal swab and have it be put in a container and sent off. And then that container has a code and those staff members then get a, a text message about the results within twenty-four hours. And so it's, it's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's very, very low intrusiveness. Very also, I guess I would say privacy oriented in the system. And so, but that's been happening and we've had actually excellent adherence to that at this point. And also we're doing enhanced masking for those individuals who are not that and vaccinated. We've done that in a couple of ways, kind of based on a couple of options that we have. So we do have accommodations in place from vaccinated staff and those are being implemented throughout the district in each building. So. And Chris alluded to this a little bit earlier when we talked about hiring. I just want to point out that substitutes continue to be a challenge. I'm bringing this to your attention because as, as representatives of the community, you may hear frustrations at times about. You know, for example, if we have to take a PE teacher or a specialist or a service provider and put them in a classroom for a day, that their kid may not get that piece. And, you know, I think that paraprofessionals is another one. I, I was meeting with Melissa Singletary at the Robert Lentz Early Learning Center on Monday morning, early for a meeting. And as I was leaving at eight-thirty, they had five unfilled para-pro positions that day that were unable to be filled by subs. So just context on that, those two, before I move on to nutrition and transportation, that the result of that is, you know, just people trying to fill in and do their best, which again can lead to some, I guess, discrepancies in kids' routines and those types of things that are, you know, that, that's not easy. It's a challenge. And again, like Chris said earlier as well, it's not unique to Seela nor the state of Washington. As you know, I'm in, some of you know, I'm in Vancouver right now, Washington for a meeting tomorrow morning. And when I got in, I turned on the TV real quick because I had to make sure it worked. So I want to watch the game later, watch the Packers get beat. But the, the news was on saying that they had a big article, I mean, a bigger report about the Beaverton and Portland School District and their lack of subs in the hundreds. So again, this is not something that is unique to us, but it just continues to be a challenge daily. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And then when it comes to nutrition and transportation, I think Chris has done an amazing job of being proactive, working with both Debbie and Lori on how we mitigate any of those unforeseen daily challenges of not having enough staff on board. You know, nutrition is not only staff, as you know, we've talked in the past about how the supply chain, similar to our FFNE order, has been impacted by COVID as well. So our supply chain in terms of food. I've heard from parents and you may as well about our, our menus changed because, you know, we, we're only planning a few days or a week out at a time now, rather than our general monthly menu that is very traditional to put on the, the refrigerator and see what's for lunch that day. We've definitely had to pivot in terms of how we've planned for meals and how, and actually what the meals are, just because of availability of food. And then to compound that, staff as well, pulling staff from other locations to be able to cover lunches in different areas. It's been a challenge. Transportation, again, we've talked about this in the past. And again, this is not a new issue and it's not a Seela issue. We, I, again, will say that Debbie and Chris have done a great job of bringing additional drivers on. Chris, I think we've brought on what, two to three additional drivers in the past ten days?
We just brought on a new driver on Monday from Richland, but she moved up here, so she joined our team. The other one we thought we had went back to the home district, they offered him a sweeter deal. So that's it for right now, but we're, but we have staff coming, drivers coming back off a leave. So we're actually, this week has been nice. We've been pretty in, in good shape.
Knocking on wood right there.
Yes, trips are still a, a challenge and, and routes are too, but trips are more of a challenge depending on when the teams want to leave.
Yeah, exactly. And so, yeah, I mean, again, you'll, you may hear rumblings about athletic trips and just some inconveniences with travel for those trips. Again, so if we have a, a game that might begin at four PM somewhere, it's a challenge to be able to have drivers not do a route and take those kids on a sports trip. So we're looking at every alternative mean we can, whether it be using our Suburbans with coaches driving to charter services and those types of things. So we're exhausting everything we can, but there inevitably will be, you know, a handful of cancellations. I know we had a soccer cancellation last week at the middle school level that was the first one of the year. I happened to talk to a parent about that. And again, that's not something we want to be doing whatsoever. And just know that we are exhausting all of our resources to be able to do that. On transportation, just I'll make another quick note and Chris can chime in if she'd like to. But, you know, part of what we might need to do in the case that we are down a lot of staff and we're without drivers is we've already done consolidation of routes, but if we have to, what we're, what we're calling not cancellation, but delay of routes. So we're planning for the event that if we are short drivers, that, you know, we may not be able to pick up students at the time that school starts. We may have to take students from a, from a secondary level, go back and get them at a second, I mean, at elementary level, and that might be later than normal. But we're doing everything we can to avoid that. But I think that, you know, Debbie, her team and Chris have done a good job of making sure that there's a plan in place. We're going to communicate what that might look like. But again, some days we don't know until, till the day of, right? So it's really about just having the plans in place. So if those things actually occur, that we know where we're going and what we're doing and how we can get kids to school. You've seen over all in the media, from Seattle to Spokane, cancellations of routes. We're trying to avoid that again as, as best we can, but knowing that if we do have to consolidate and or delay, we're going to get kids to school.
And did I see something somewhere where there's talk about potentially pooling, you know, getting a group of sub-drivers into an ESD level pool or a regional or Yakima-based pool of some kind, so that we could share among districts.
I'll let Chris talk about that. Chris has been a part of a group throughout the region that actually has been working specifically on this issue, both recruitment. I mean, recruitment is one of the primary issues, but then also retention and covering shortages. So Chris, you want to talk about your group?
Yeah, the superintendent, Kevin Chase Superintendent, ESD one oh five, he put together a subcommittee of superintendents and business folks like myself and transportation directors. And we've gotten, I think we've had three meetings so far, two or three meetings. And we've, like Shane mentioned, we're talking about recruitment. How can we better recruit drivers? How can we work together as a region to combine resources for recruitment? Whether it be radio ads, TV ads, videos. I know one thing that ESD is working for us on as we speak is a video that we all can share out that has drivers actually interviewed as to why they love what they do, how important it is for them to be the first face that these kids see every day and the last face these kids see. And, and we have a driver that we've recommended to be part of the video and she'll be part of it. But so that's something, we have talked briefly or at length, I guess, about the pool of subs that we can all access. But right now, none of us have, I mean, the, the pool, we don't really have a pool of drivers, sub-drivers that we can all draw from right now. We, each district maybe has a couple subs, two, two subs, maybe three subs. So.
More like a puddle.
What's that Shane?
More like a puddle rather.
A puddle, yeah. And, and they're all driving. I mean, I mean, our transportation director, Debbie Heidi, she drives almost every day. Our transportation coordinator in the office also drives daily almost. And our secretary or admin assistant gets asked to drive quite a bit too. So we, we're covering things right now, but as Shane mentioned, we're looking at that contingency plan that if we have to cancel a route, what does that look like? What's our communication of families and getting that communication out sooner than later? So people know that could happen and what happens when it happens, you know? So it's been, it's been good work so far.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's a good, it's good to see people trying to pull together to solve a problem, really, that's what it is. And so, because really, it, as challenging as this can be, and Alicia can attest to this being in another district, but prior to this, it is, you know, we're all kind of competing for the same people when it comes right down to it. Kellyanne can attest to that as well, I mean, but, you know, so it's really about, I mean, can we find ways to support each other? So anyway, I would end my COVID updates there and I'm going to move on to a couple of things. But I'll see if there are any other last, last second questions. Someone's burning out in a car behind me or if you heard that. Any other last COVID questions? Okay, I will move on. So I want to talk a little bit about the WASDA conference coming up. So we are attending as a district, both Jeff and Sarah are representing the board. I know, Kellyanne, that you are just so distraught that you aren't able to attend in Bellevue this year. Dan as well, being in Norway, I think it's a long flight to come over for a two-day conference. But looking forward to it, being back in person at this venue in Bellevue. And so I just want to give the board and everybody a quick rundown about what the day, it's, it's the eighteenth through twentieth. I will be leaving earlier in the day on the eighteenth. I'll be bringing new board member or members with me to that day for the new board boot camp. I will have Jeff, Sarah, Alicia will be joining us, who will be coming later on, on Thursday. There's a dinner Thursday night and the, the conference starts in earnest on, excuse me, the nineteenth, which is a Friday. And then the twentieth, again, located in Bellevue. Yeah, I mean, a lot of you have been to a number of these over the years. I think they are pretty motivated to have a good conference this year, being back in person. And I'm looking forward to seeing some colleagues from around the state that I haven't seen in a while and just the opportunity. So just want to make sure people are aware of that. And Jeff and Sarah, I will get with you over the next few days to kind of coordinate some logistics on that.
That's good.
Okay. Board docs, I want to take a few minutes to pause here and talk about this. I, I sent you some information about a week ago about board docs and I'll give you the emphasis behind our desire to move to this platform. First of all, you know, we've, we've done our, our board meeting minutes and agendas the same way. I think for about seven years now, prior to that, we were very old school. It was very much all word document processed minutes and agendas. And with the Google onset as a district, seven years ago, we started utilizing more of the shared features and whatnot. But we'd actually like to add another element of transparency to our board docs and be able to do our agendas prior to the meeting like we do now, however, with some live links for some of the items that are there. We've done a research on what other districts are doing in terms of how they preview meetings for the community and staff. And there's a mix, but I will tell you that Board Docs is a platform that over a hundred districts in our district, in our state is using currently. So one, it gives us a really, it's a web-based platform that will link directly from our website. So when we go to the board section of our website, then click minutes and agendas, it will take you to Board Docs. You'll be able, able to archive minutes like we do now, but in a much more user-friendly approach with searchable keywords to be able to look for things quickly within old minutes. And also, just on the, on the backside of things, the, you know, the admin side of things where the preparation of the agendas and also the post-meeting minutes, there are some features that really streamline and make it much more convenient for our staff and specifically Tiara, when Sarah's staff is Tiara. Tiara does a remarkable job with minutes, as you know, very detailed. But this actually gives her the opportunity to do some real-time minutes within each section. It defaults to, board members' names are in there. She can click on who approves resolutions and whatnot, and that automatically populates into the minutes. There are just a lot of pieces there that will help us be able to get our minutes out more quickly. And again, so there's two reasons for this, this move. One is some efficiencies and the second is for transparency. So with what we saw and what we have been able to kind of experience, we're looking at moving forward with it. So what the timeline looks like is I wanted to first bring it to you tonight, see if there's any thoughts, questions or concerns. Once we, oh, I, I should mention that there's one more piece that our board policies, which currently we have on our website, will be housed now within this platform, Board Docs. So when somebody wants to go to policies, again, on our website, it won't look any different. They'll just click on policies, it'll take them in the Board Docs. The policies are, again, situated in a way that I think are easily accessible, more easily accessible compared to what we have. And like the minutes are searchable by keyword. I can't tell you how many times over the last few years working with Tiara, where I've asked her to look a policy up for me or look up something in policy and we don't have that keyword searchability, or if a patron wants to look up something about, and we have hundreds of policies. So the, the keyword search is another element that really, really enticed us to want to go down this path. So should we, we move forward on this, I should say, we, it's about a ten-week transition. So we're looking at, you know, early to mid-January, which kind of could be ideal with new board members coming on, or member or members. And so we would be able to do some training as a full district team. From a user standpoint, in terms of a board member standpoint, I think you'll see very little if any really interruption to how you're getting your minutes, it's just going to be in a different format. And with our ability to provide you with some context and some offline notes about some of the things ahead of time. So with that, Tiara, do you have anything? I know I don't want to put you on the spot because I know you're at home and I know you're not on with.
I'm here and I don't have anything to add. I am excited about the opportunity to look at it. I think that it's a great program and I think that it would save a significant amount of time.
Yeah, and really, since this is the platform that, you know, we'll be using for your meetings, we wanted to just make sure that we got some feedback from you at this point. Okay.
Are there other, other uses besides board doc, documents, I mean, it within the district? I mean, with.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. And. Yeah, definitely. And uh, there is a secondary level to the platform that we're not going to initially um, you know, secure, because I think what we want to do is make sure that we, this piece is up and going and, and running well. But I'll give you an example that uh, you're able to do if you use the next tier up, which is very, it's, it's a pretty small level of, of upgrade. But you can do things like district committees. So an example would be um, a few years ago, when we had those ongoing community facilities, community, the facilities committee with community members. And we did minutes and agendas for those. It's a place where you could store those as well. And take minutes for those meetings. But yes, definitely, uh, we can add multiple layers of committees throughout the district and be able to utilize this platform for that.
We do away with Google Docs then?
We will. Well, I mean, not, not as a district, it's still our primary sort of word or um, you know, doc, doc creator as a district, but in terms of how we uh, manage our board minutes and agendas, yes, Google Docs will be going away.
Well, it's really targeted at managing board documentation.
Correct, yeah.
Not, it's not intended to be a district-wide.
No, no. And, and this company works with uh, you know, it's not called School Board Docs, it's called Board Docs for a reason. They work with uh, boards all over the country in terms of uh, these types of minutes and agenda and archiving. Um, so they've got a lot of experience with it. You know, I've, I've been familiar with it for years. Uh, I didn't honestly think a few years ago that we needed it. Um, but over the course of time, they've improved their product. Getting a chance to just talk with Tiara about it and experience it uh, the more recent product, I think it's, provide some great uh, efficiencies and transparencies.
Other questions by anybody else? Do you need action on it?
No. We don't, it's an informational item, but I wanted to make sure that uh, the board player before we move forward on it. So. Okay, um, I don't want to take a lot of time on this, but I just wanted you to be, last spring, we had a uh, uh, there was a balanced calendar summit within the region and I'll get a little bit more specific on what balanced calendar is. Um, well, a, a quick explanation is basically taking the one hundred and eighty days uh, to account and spreading them out over the course of the year to account for the summer slide, which is just a term used for uh, long summers and what the uh, the impact on student learning is. Um, this is an initiative that is not a, not a CLO one, not a regional one, not a state one, but more even a national one. We're really starting to rethink about, rethink how we um, create district calendars. It doesn't mean more school for, for the typical student. It's just as redistributes to one hundred and eighty days, a little bit differently. And I want to, and I'll say this again, but I'll say it now, that there, this is, there isn't, there are no decisions on this, nor are there any plans in the, in the very near future to do something like this. If we, if we were to be a part of it, we'd be a part of it regionally. And I'll explain a little bit more, but um, so uh, that's kind of talks about what the concept of is for students. And also really, it's been interesting to see staff feedback from around the country about this model and how it has been positive for them in a number of ways. I think one of the things, and I think I talked about it about a month ago or so, is just about this idea of especially during COVID, the, the burnout really that can happen. And I've seen it and we've all seen it um, in the, within the district earlier. Um, and it's not, again, not a CLO thing, but the opportunity to provide um, you know, a more spread out calendar uh, gives people the opportunity to be refreshed and which is, is good for kids. So this is, like I said, this is being studied at both the state and regional level, and I actually found out today that at the national level as well. Um, we are one of several districts in our region that received a grant to study this concept. We, I applied for the grant uh, late summer, found out we got it in uh, September and um, it's not a lot of money, but the purpose of the grant is really about study. It's not about implementation. It's about, let's study this and studying includes multiple opportunities for stakeholders to be a part of the process. There are a lot of questions that would come with something like this, obviously. And so uh, we'd want to make sure that we heard everybody's perspective. Um, the other thing I'd say is, you know, I, I uh, I think there's some power in doing it regionally or even as a state. So you're not sitting out there on your own, trying something different from everybody else, because as we know, we have multiple staff that um, work in our district, but maybe live in another district boundary. You know, we have teachers in our district live in Ellensburg and Yakima, out in West Valley or East Valley. And so if the schedules and for schools are, are much different, that can be a, a burden for families as well. This is likely to be at a one and a half year process. And again, no decisions will be made during our study process. Study process is just that. Study, answer questions, uh, and we'll be doing some study at both the local level. But at the regional level too, the E S D has a, has also secured a grant that will be providing um, some region-wide parent opportunities, teacher opportunities to be able to uh, learn more. So um, I should have put this in earlier, but I just want to give you uh, those of you don't know and anybody watching what a balanced calendar looks like. So this is a traditional school calendar, and if you think about the start of school being right around end of August, early September, this is what it typically looks like. You know, you've got a, a big chunk until Thanksgiving, you've got a chunk until Christmas break. And you've got another big chunk until um, spring break and then another chunk before your, your traditional summer vacation. Um, while there are many models for a balanced calendar, this is just an example of one. And again, uh, no decisions on this, just wanted to provide you with what one looks like. So again, if you think about starting um, here in August, you have forty-five days and then like a fall break, fifteen days off. Thirty days again, uh, three days for Thanksgiving, another fifteen till uh, winter break, fifteen days off. A forty-five day break and then another fifteen day period, followed by forty-five days to end the year with a thirty-day um, summer rather than uh, the sixty day in the traditional. And one of the benefits um, besides just being able to spread it out for reasons of fatigue with those students and staff, these intercession opportunities, these fifteen day periods here, uh, you know, we can offer both intervention and extension programs at those times, which would replace a traditional summer school, which usually takes place in that, you know, that, that large summer block. A modified calendar allow you to do that in more real time. You know, if uh, you're into that first forty-five days and you see students who are uh, or, or struggling with standards already, you can be uh, intervening early or extending again. So um, I just want to put this on your radar that it's a discussion that we had a brief uh, time of talking about last year. And uh, it has not uh, died off. You know, COVID has kept it sort of at bay a little bit, but we're still very much talking about this um, as a region. And so uh, we'll be ramping back up some of our advisory meetings in the near future. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
Did we have districts piloting this locally? I thought we had one or two.
Yeah, good question. We um, we have two uh, Tappanish and Highland that are both using different models. In fact, Highland finished uh, is finishing their first intercession tomorrow. And the way that they are starting it is they're doing um, a couple of week-long intercessions at different intervals throughout the year. Uh, it's going to extend their day, their year by about three weeks. Uh, their goal is to extend those intercessions over the course of a few years to two to three weeks, but they started with a, you know, a more um, I guess, conservative approach of just saying, let's just try a week-long intervi- uh, intercessions. So yeah, we actually, Mark uh, from Highland, Mark Anderson Superintendent there uh, spoke to their superintendent meeting and he's going to share some results with us after that. Tappanish is the other district. They're doing something a little bit more unique where they're doing um, they've actually extended their school day um, Monday through Thursday. And their Fridays are only, I, I can't recall right off the top of my head if it's a partial day or no day. But Friday, they're calling Wildcat Academy. And again, that's for uh, interventions and extensions. So a typical student may only go to school four days a week, have a longer day. And the Friday is more for um, intervention and extension again. So those are two models that are being done locally. Uh, there are more models that are being talked about throughout the state. There are many states in our country that have already implemented some of these different models. And so uh, we have uh, Michigan and Missouri and one other state who have been a part of our discussions regionally and just sharing their perspectives.
So I guess I'm, what are the out, as a grant recipient, were there, what were the expectations? What were, what were we going to be supplying to the, the granting um, but.
Yeah.
The grand tour at the, at the end of this.
So there are uh, very few requirements of grant recipients. It was to be a part of the state convenings. They're going to have four state convenings. We had our first last week. Those state convenings are both learning opportunities and sharing opportunities. What have we, what do we know? What do we, what have we learned? And so, you know, it's not a, a large grant, it's about eighteen thousand dollars, but it just allows us to bring people together um, at times or provide events or trainings or, or even bring in a, a speaker per se that might be able to talk to parent staff about their experiences with this. Um, there are, you know, questions that rise to the top right away for people. Um, that those are people that have experience that can answer. So yeah, I, I, I think that the grant really is, it's a true uh, study grant with just being able uh, being asked to be a part of the, the process of learning together. Okay. All right. Got one more thing, and this is just a uh, snapshot of it. So I'm going to actually um, stop sharing to show you kind of the live version of it. At our last meeting, we talked about um, board calendar that we've had in the past and this year. Uh, we, or actually during COVID, we sort of went away from that. And I think Kellyanne has called it periodic table of calendars, but this uh, this is sort of our version two point O. And what we did on this is basically streamlined um, the colors, so they weren't all over the place. You've got your study sessions, your board highlights, reports that are annual or otherwise, meeting topics we know need to happen, annual resolutions we know that need to happen, policy reviews that need to happen, uh, any notifications to the board, any events from WASDA. This teaching and learning component, don't look at this as blank uh, as anything other than I didn't even tell Alicia about this until today. But it's a great opportunity for Alicia, as she already has some thoughts in her head about how to uh, parse out over the year. Um, her reports to you, uh, we put our community collaboration events on here. And then we did just sort of a modified school visit, look at um, knowing that we have uh, John Campbell not probably going to be ready till later, knowing that we have four board members available this year uh, for those visits, knowing that um, we have six schools. We did a little bit of a cycle here, just to make sure we have two elementary and two secondary represented within each of our school visits uh, timeline. So um, the other nice thing about this that Tiara and I talked about is this is actually a, a Google Doc as opposed to the calendar we had before, which is a little bit more um, stagnant. Uh, this, we can share and collaborate on it and be able to put things in more real time. And so uh, I guess I just open it up for questions or comments on this new format and uh, anything you'd like to see adjusted or added.
Oh, it's great. I love seeing it all laid out like that. Nice job.
Yeah, I think it came together nicely.
I've enjoyed this, the format in the past because personally, you can look ahead and say, oh, we've got the, you know, the annual nutrition report coming up next month and it gives the, gives us as board members an opportunity if, you know, we wanted to sort of target and focus on, you know, school nutrition issues or trends or things about the district and so forth. It'd give us a chance to, you know, do a little homework prior to the annual report. So, you know, it's nice to see uh, topics and, and um, departments on the schedule so that, you know, we know what's coming and we have a lot of opportunity to be better prepared.
Yeah, I agree. Kellyanne is just like, so where's December at?
So. No, in all seriousness, it is just kind of crazy to think, I think I'm down to two minutes, two meetings, but yeah, since I've lost track of time, who knows?
Yeah. Yeah. Jeff, what are you gonna, I think you're, we're gonna ask about how next steps with this?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think what we're going to do in the uh, while we're still Google, you know, we're not going to be moving to board docs for quite some time. Make this available on the board uh, who classroom page uh, we will let you know as we add and or have to adjust things. You know, there are times, as you know, that, for example, Jeff, your, your comment about uh, the nutrition report. If there is a conflict for some reason, we know ahead of time, we'll make those adjustments. And we can make this document more real time um, and up to date. So um, I, I think we'd love to get it to a place after a little while where we could actually make it. I mean, it's not that it's not a public document. I think the rea- reason right now is just that it's still a little bit in development of us trying to figure out where to place things and make them make the most sense for our meetings. So and also going off of different requirements by law. So uh, but I think it's something that we could also uh, publish uh, to the public prior to school years.
Absolutely. I see no reason why not. That um, certainly be something, you know. Some people would be most interested in various topics as they're coming up.
Yep. If you really want to know about the transportation department, you know when their presentation is, right? So.
I like it.
Okay. Well, with that, that concludes my report for the night. Uh, yeah, I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you, Shane. Um, lots of information, good stuff. Appreciate that. Um, all right, moving on then, uh, board communications, this be opportunity to address the group uh, with anything you have in mind. Open it up for anyone. All right. Well, that's, everybody's on mute. Everybody's smiling at me. Dan, Dan's wanting to go back to bed. All right. Um, like the only board communication I would have was um, have a safe and happy Halloween, everybody. That would be my, my only comment there. Um, any executive session needed?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, um, I, we, we will adjourn the meeting and we will um, have the next meeting on November ninth. A study session. We know Sarah, you are not going to be able to attend that one. So um, but we will get the information out um, to everybody. And so thanks for joining those that did join and for everyone on the call. Um, have a safe and enjoyable weekend and we'll talk next time. Meeting is adjourned.
All right. Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.